So, that said, Jim is going to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Before I defer the pledge to General Getty, who is a veteran, well respected. Remember why we had the parade yesterday. Remember the soldiers that made our opportunity to meet here today. General, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, General.
Okay, this is a special workshop meeting of the President's City Council. Today is Wednesday, November 12th, 10:00 in the morning, and everybody's here. Thank you, gentlemen, for taking the last year to work on a project. Craig, oh, roll up.
Mayor Perkett?
Here.
Mayor Perdell-Landerson?
Here.
Councilman Arnold?
Here.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Peetken?
Here.
Councilman LaZell?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Here.
Okay. Craig, Bowles, in your court.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Actually, this process of addressing the airport, the airport area, facilities at the airport and so forth began 20 months ago in March of 2013 when we began a structured inquiry to address economic development. That effort continued with four strategic planning sessions this last spring that Jeff Burke provided to the council. And at the last, before of that series, a list of key actions was outlined, actions going forward, including meeting with stakeholders. So, we had a preliminary discussion, if you will. We set the stage and the table about topics of interest for the airport and airport area, and then it became the time to shift gears, that is, to engage a variety of stakeholders. Stakeholder input is obviously necessary because we're the city of Prescott. We don't, we're not the development business. We're not the private land ownership business usually. But we are a facilitator and want to be a catalyst for economic development of the city and particularly the airport area, which has the most promise for economic development of, let's say, certain types. So, we embarked upon a process to engage stakeholders, to identify opportunities for public-private coordination and cooperation. And the end result, the goal, is and remains to assure compatibility in the timing, type, quality, and location of new development at the airport. So, what we're really interested in is steering the ship here to provide guidance, to make sure we're all on the same page, to have awareness, to have the same factual basis, and then we can assure compatibility for the future. It became evident that there would be great value in assembling an ad hoc committee, and we have the ad hoc committee here today, private sector steering group, if you will, to provide a framework for the stakeholder engagement. We were very fortunate in Prescott, city of 40,000, to provide, to find a lot of talent to form this group. They're at the other table, here, the other side of the table, and we're going to hear from them. And really, the objective today is for the steering group to provide to the council and those others in attendance today their thoughts, their findings, their recommendations with respect to Ernest A. Love Field and the adjacent airport area. So, effectively, we turned the stakeholder group or the steering group loose. We engaged stakeholders, property owners, business owners, and so forth, and gained some information, and that is consolidated in the presentation today. So, what we're going to do, and Jeff will follow me, will be summarizing the results of the dialogue since that series of four presentations in the spring of this year, recommendations of the steering group, and really how and where it's recommended that we proceed from here toward development of the airport and achieve the economic development opportunities that it presents.
Yep.
Thank you, Craig. I'm going to take a few minutes to run through the process, if you will, that we utilized in order to gain perspective, information from private sector members who are with us here today, the participants, the purpose of their engagement with us, the process we went through, and as Craig said, the key findings, recommendations, and the partnerships there to leverage what we would like to try to do in the airport and the airport area. This is a map, an aerial, if you will, that shows again the airport area centered on the airport itself, about a two-mile radius is the actual area that we were looking at altogether, about 8,000 acres in total. The members of the steering group, we have identified here for you. Two members, Mr. Gordon and Mr. Lang, were unable to be here today, but we really want to thank this group for a lot of time that they have given us, really since January of this year or so. We appreciate all their efforts, and it really provided a group that has a lot of experience and understanding, not just in airports, but being able to connect airport and economic development opportunities. The purpose of the steering group is identified here for you. As Mr. McConnell said, we wanted to get some feedback from people who really had a distance, a step back, if you will, from what we inside the city at the staff level might otherwise be looking at. We wanted to gain a broader perspective, so this group was assembled. They helped us in the review and the contributions that they made in order to put together the four presentations that were mentioned in January through April, provide feedback to us in terms of what are the challenges and opportunities that present themselves at the airport, particularly as it relates to FAA, really, and ADOT facilities and in general funding issues. We wanted to engage, as was said, stakeholders in the area. People have a different perspective, people who bring different interests, if you will, to the table. That included existing businesses in the airport area, tenants at the airport, realtors, developers, key property owners. So, we really wanted to get out there and get information from a broad group, and the steering group helped us provide and gain that information. And ultimately, after all of these discussions, which ran really almost, I think it was about 23 meetings altogether since January of this year, we got to the point where we were ready to do some evaluation and make recommendations that are being presented to Mayor and Council today. And this is the process, as I said. We had our steering group convened. We met starting, I believe it was actually the first week, or the last week of January was the first meeting that we had. This group gave us just about every Friday afternoon from about 3:00 on, so it wasn't fun duty. Everyone had to be there on a Friday afternoon. But they really hung in there with us. Including in the 23 meetings, there were eight sessions with different representatives of stakeholder interest at the airport. We conducted a strategic analysis, SWOT, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats as it relates to the airport and the airport area. We also took a look at other reports that were out there by groups unaffiliated with the airport that could provide some perspective on our airport and the airport area. So, we really tried to uncover as much information as we could. And then finally, that was distilled to the point where we have our discussions and recommendations that are presented for consideration of Mayor and Council at this time. And with that, we're going to ask each of our steering group members are going to help us with the recommendations. The key area findings will be kicked off by General Getty.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, everybody. Key airport area findings, basically this first page, a lot of it's obvious to people, but it's things that came to the surface based on all of our interviews, our presentations, and research. The airport area presents a significant economic impact, promise, and it's due to those reasons, land availability, other single ownership, existing and expandable city infrastructure is already there, appropriate zoning and location. The live, work, and play environment in this area carry in that theme that Prescott already has. We don't want it to become a mismatch. We want to, we don't want just a big industrial area. We don't want just an airport. We want everything to be compatible to keep policy with the live, work, and play theme that we have. Significant retail development opportunities exist, obviously, with the 89-89A quarter. We have excellent logistics to get to the airport and the airport area. And with the housing that's planned out in that direction, both in Prescott and Prescott Valley, we see opportunities for commercial development. The, obviously, the airport area, where you're at Prescott, help for new manufacturing distribution that we have everything we need out there, probably lacking railroad access, and that's about it. And the airport area presents an excellent opportunity for the city to be creative in its housing policies. In other words, many people come to Prescott and they say the housing is too expensive for new people coming into town, whether it's workforce or even new recruits into the industry that we already have here. So, hopefully, that'll be providing, I think, area with a mix of housing to facilitate development. This page focuses more on the airport itself than the airport area. Obviously, the airport is the center of this whole process we're going through. We focused on the airport area, but you've got to have this also. It's an underutilized city asset, and most of us don't realize that. The future economic success shows that we need to do some things to improve the airport, mainly the runway. That's probably our biggest issue at this point. The airport needs updating. We all know that. We live here. We all hear about terminal, things like that. And obviously, we want airport development requires long-term financial commitment of the city, but we want to leverage the return on investment. And the priorities and timing of the airport is heavily focused on what the FAA and federal government will give us. That's going to drive the train as far as the airport itself, not necessarily development around the airport. But it's critical if the FAA, if ADOT is on board, to have that.
Thank you. Next up is the actual recommendations, and that will be kicked off with Mr. David Schimblecker.
The first goal is fairly simple, right? Take the plans you have, integrate the planning and development in the airport area to achieve the live, work, play environment. If left to its own, you may have too much work, too much living, or no play. The idea is to take the planning and look at that area and balance it out. The first action to achieve that is to provide a stable, sustainable funding to implement the recommendation, means through the normal department budgets and economic development and the staff, make sure that we're looking at the plans, integrating them together, and keeping it as a, in a direction towards the live, work, play. We also need to facilitate the new commercial ventures, how long, 89-89A, and keep incompatible kind of businesses from being in the weeds. And right now, we've got the new medical center out there. We've got what's happened with Glassford Heights, Granite Dell's. You're going to have a lot of housing moving in. That's naturally going to pull in the need for retail, hotels, restaurants, those kind of businesses. So, we want that to be pulled in, thought out, processed. So, those are going to drive the kind of businesses we want. They're also going to drive the roads and accesses. Some of the words we heard from the existing businesses is the road and access. The industrial markets lack it. So, that all has to be put together and integrated. Third bullet is you need to promote airport area as the city's primary location for the In my previous life, I was approached many times by cities and towns, saying, hey, if you're planning to relocate your business, you want to move somewhere, consider us. Here's a package, what we can do for you. You know, I never heard from Prescott, didn't know Prescott existed. So, one of the things you need to do is you need to promote the city a little bit. You put some basic marketing material together and say, here's Prescott, it's a wonderful place up in northern Arizona. It's got good workforce. We have land for you to use, and we've got a plan and how it looks to be. And so, small budget, put together, that does the basic promoting of Prescott is what we really need to go do. And then, the fourth one is important. You've heard from the general that land here, viewed by many, is being out of Florida. Young people moving in, want to buy a house, and work here generally don't end up at Prescott. And if they're in Prescott Valley or farther out, they can't afford to buy houses. And so, I don't care if you've ever heard of community land trust before. We really need to look at feasibility and doing some of the out-of-the-box thinking on how to make houses affordable. Community land trust is basically set up by the one C3 organization. You lease the land to natural property owners. They own the house. And the idea is you keep a set of housing that you're not buying as an investment, not when you're going to make one to sell it. You're buying it to have a home for your family to live in, and then when you sell it, there's a predefined formula for what you get back out of it. It's been very successful in other communities, and nearby, it was only a sawmill over, a sawmill, community land trust over in Albuquerque. Very similar situation to what we have here. They have an economic area, they've got manufacturing there, and a tourist area, and the area in between has been approached by everyone, has kind of gone together well and well. And so, they took that area over here, then community land trust laid out parks and housing and businesses, and it's been very, very successful.
Thank you, David. Goal two will be handled by Dr. Ayers and Dr. Sabata.
Before I start on this goal, let me also back up David's comment. Having an area where, for instance, in Everglade, we're very pleased to be part of this process. We have a lot of young people who fall in love with Prescott and want to stay here. A young man last year, our chancellor's award winner, our number-one graduate engineer, wanted to stay in the city. His parents live here, he's excited about staying here, unable to find a job because there's simply not the kind of manufacturing, engineering opportunity available for these bright young people who want to live here. Parents live here, father, three, wife, three kids. One of the years, he's, he's already gone a ton of way, he's over in California. We'd like to see those things happen here, and that's part of the reason we think this is so important. To talk about the airport itself, one of the key, the key item that has to happen to facilitate all this is for us to have an airport that's usable for both corporations and fire services and for scheduled airlines. And that allows us to, would lead to an airport that would be a deep commercial airport. My actual terminology is not a primary airport, but a commercial airport with modest employment, 10,000 and above, which will allow us to support regional air service and link up to other hubs. Right now, our airline links us to California, and that's where we head. But if we have an airline that connects us to Albuquerque to the east, Public Kings and South Denver, and will get you on your way, it saves a lot of transit time, and a lot of, as all of us know, a lot of us spend different ways and times getting to Phoenix or date for our destination. The length of the runway is critical because in the high-hot summer months at 5,000-foot dens, or 5,000-foot elevation in late June, July, August, and September, aircraft simply can't perform with the safety margins the FAA requires. We took testimony from several folks who came in, and all led to the same discussion. Corporate aircraft who have come, attempt to come into the city will not come and land here in some of those months because they can't leave. They can land, their rules allow them to land, but when they go back to take off again, the runway's not long enough, and it'll require that they have safety margins. Airlines that have operated here for years, and several airlines, have had to deal with this by limiting ticket sales, by taking seats off airplanes, by actually downloading aircraft when they had unexpected high temperatures and putting people on buses or vehicles to go instead of flying the airplane. So, someone should reasonably expect to buy a ticket, go to an airport, and that ticket and get on an airplane and leave from the airport. That's a reasonable expectation of commerce, and right now, the runway makes that even challenging for the airline that is present here now. And having airline service, regional airline service in the city, and having corporations able to connect with their manufacturing plant or their engineering firm or a letter of invitation is huge. And also, the fire service. The fire service operates airplanes at maximum gross weight. Amazingly enough, the fire season occurs during those high-hot months, so they occur during July, August, September. And so, we want this airport to be the airport of choice for the U.S. Fire Service for the foreseeable future. They provide great service to our community, they're great partners, and Love Field should be that place. But a longer runway is going to make that much easier, much easier decision to make. When you link to the runway, you end up linking Taxway Charlie. Taxway Charlie is simply the one that runs down in front of the current terminal. That also will require that we take a look at where the terminal is located, and if that opportunity comes up, the terminal building that exists now is pretty long and cheap, been modified several times. I think it actually operates under a waiver right now with the FAA because the security area is considered a temporary building. It's a temporary building that I think is sort of there in perpetuity, but it's a permanent temporary or a temporary permanent, I'm not sure. And having a reasonable terminal that airline passengers can go into, process through to their flights, and be in comfortable location makes a lot of sense for both corporate and corporate airline. And the location of that terminal, there's at least a couple in the package you'll see that have been considered, but deciding on the runway length, the tax away length, and the location of the terminal are key, critical decisions that have to occur now. And once we make this decision, decisions we make are key. They will allow us to obtain the appropriate funding from the FAA. And to talk about the funding piece, I'm going to introduce Dr. Alvin Sabata, who's the chairman of our Aviation Business Association or Department. And Dr. Sabata is really a national expert in this area. Maybe you could just tell briefly about how this drives the funding in place. I'm sure you have that.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. The reason that we wanted to go for the 10,000 mark, I think that's really important and it's reasonable as well. If you notice that the term employment is used, and just to clarify what an employment is, that's the person getting on board an aircraft. That's different than an aircraft operation. That's an aircraft taking off and landing. So, to put it into, say, monthly or daily terms, in order to meet the 10,000 a year mark, which is a funding milestone for getting into discretionary funds that are much, much larger. Matter of fact, instead of 150,000 in matching funds, we may be going to 95,000 matching funds from the federal aviation organization. In order to get to that 10,000 mark, we can look at about 800 people getting on board a plane a month, or about 27 a day. So, when you get to that point where you have 27 people on average getting on board an aircraft, then you move from non-primary to primary. So, even though the term primary may seem daunting to some, it really isn't. There are different levels of primary. There's non-hub, small hub, medium hub, and large hub. When you're in the non-hub, primary, under 10,000 category, it actually does put you into much more substantive funding, and yet you're still not going more than necessarily 27 people a day going on there. So, the size of the aircraft isn't necessarily going to grow exponentially, it's a result of that. Okay?
And that's where you see the estimates here, where there would be a bunch of $3 million in local funding, we would qualify for as much as $40 million or so in federal funding for this kind of project. And the key is to understand the rules. That's why we're so thankful that Dr. Sabata, she nails the rules. She understands how this works, and of course, Emerald, you are glad to provide this kind of consulting to the city because it's some of what we do, so.
And just to give a measure, we're between 5,000 and 6,000 employments a year right now. So, we're talking about moving from 5,000 to 6,000 employments to 10,000. So, it's about a 4,000 employment increase, and we're going to enter into a higher category, but still making a service level that's designed by the community.
And that'll allow us over 15,000 a year period to move to something more employment.
Can we ask questions?
Sure. My question would be, if that's the goal is 10, and we're at that level now, does the city become a partner in, or how do you get that extra amount of passengers with the airline service we have now unless we as a group, as a city, offer incentives for people to do that?
Well, one of the methods is offer incentives, but another is just marketing yourself, like David mentioned. We've actually had conversations in two faculty-led student consulting projects, where we spoke to major commercial service providers. They've asked us not to mention who they are because they're divulging their commercial service strategy on why they go into the community. But most recently, Delta Airlines and we had a discussion about the possibility of what would it take to get some type of service like that. And sometimes it's just that communication to the community and the carrier and a match between what are not our needs and their needs coming up.
Because I often wonder, in an airport that I'm very familiar with in Kalispell, Montana, very much same ambiance as Prescott, you've got my head laying, you have three major carriers that fly in there, and for the life of me, understanding what Prescott has to offer in the region, why we can't get one beneficial carrier to provide on-time, quality service to the community, so we can get to that next level.
Yeah, our inquiries with the carriers that we spoke to, I just reflected of disunity associated with the airport with the terminal conflict. That is significant. Additionally, the additional requirement of safety margins, just a little bit extra, 1,300 feet, really meant a lot in terms of their decision as to whether or not they want to cite or help service to a community.
If they bring an aircraft in here, they need to fill out a seat and slide it out. And if you've flown in the last 13 years, you notice you don't fly with empty seats anymore, that empty center seat we all used to love, had vanished about three or four years ago. And so, you can't bring everybody into the camp, but I have a terminal with a few seats.
Yeah, Mayor. Dr. Sabata, something, it doesn't seem like it's going to take too many people to get us over that 10,000 with what we're running today. My question is on the tourism aspect, does it have to be scheduled airline service? Or if someone started operating tours out of Prescott to the Grand Canyon, to Sedona, does that count as employments to get towards that goal of getting over 10,000? Because it seems like if we're under 10, we're looking at hundreds of thousands from the feds. If we're over 10, we're looking at millions.
With scheduled commercial service.
So, tourism would not get that?
The FAA uses a formula. The formula is based on scheduled commercial service, and so they are looking for those 10,000 seats to be filled over a year's period. And does the other help with economic impact? Well, speaking as a former aerospace and defense commissioner for the state of Arizona, as we focus on economic impact in communities throughout the state, yes, the charter traffic that you're, the business traffic, charter traffic is critical also to the viability of a community. But the commercial service is often key for businesses citing their businesses here. They want reliable, close commercial service in order to be able to conduct business. So, again, a business, if you don't have that commercial service, with the end, what's considered a one-hour drive, that's usually the capture zone, and up to 90 minutes is usually the capture zone for the drive, at which point businesses will cite elsewhere.
Essentially, you think about a major manufacturing company, they may have a corporate jet that flies in and out of here seven times a year. But it's key that they be able to do that, but they will generate a lot of employments because their folks are going to be traveling to different meetings with customers and that sort of thing. So, all the different pieces add together to a viable airport, and right now, we're just a little short of that.
Another thing that I want to say with the landlord, and that's a key issue, nothing planned to fly down to Phoenix, we don't know if we're going to be able to fly. If you have to go out there and then take a bus, you're just not even a scheduled shot there. And that goes back to the runway life in the hot days, and having the ability that the planes can, in fact, take off with 15 people, or larger planes with 25, 27. If you don't know you can take off from this airport, you may, you're not even scheduled. If you don't know you can take off from this airport, you may, you're not even scheduled to.
As someone who spends a lot of time...
With a long-term commitment here, what we've seen so often in many communities is we give them an incentive, they make a commitment for two or three years, and then they drop the service. They need a longer-term commitment.
Well, I think they feel perhaps the same way in the worst. They need to see from the community that there is that long-term commitment there. And that does obviously show itself in the investment of some of the funds necessary for the match. The FAA's airport improvement program is an extraordinary program that matches to 95% of 95% of funds, a little bit higher than that in the state of Arizona, for a very, very relatively small local match. Even though it is an important amount of revenue that's going to be generated to the community, it's something for us to consider, that they're part of the table with us. And when the airlines see this, that we are actually working to develop the airport and improve the services and create the terminal facility and allow a runway that allows the statement that they need to depart and take off, that's all part of the mutual respect that is occurring between airports and the tenants, airlines.
I guess, it's almost like a chicken and the egg. We need to have a longer runway to, so we don't have empty seats so they can take off. And to get the numbers up correct, you can't get the...
And that exists, and yes, and that exists today. There are parts of it.
But in the end, I think to go back to another question as well. The goal is not 10,000 employments. That's essentially a stopoff point to get to the next level. The goal is that we build employments. And I travel more than I'd like significantly. Spent a lot of time on I-17 and Zepplon East Coast a bunch and with Seattle Land Plaza. The market is there. We pass each other down that highway and in front of a couple of things all the time. A lot of people traveling, even now, without the sniffing of industry here, starting in the industry. That is a bit of a self-licking ice cream, but it's getting better and better.
I have a number of people who are working in industry now who fly away from Prescott community here to L.A., who have stopped and have been for a lot of reasons. Yet, another line of aircraft who probably see a little bit of blast and it's something to count on. And then people start flying. But right now, they're either not really here or driving up and down I-17 every day. And it's, to myself, I mean, I fly out here quite a bit. I'm just a kid, but if I'm going to go to L.A. and do a connecting flight, I would not fly. It's not worth it.
I think I-17 is becoming unreliable in itself. We don't need to buy a seat up there.
Exactly. So if I know I got to go down there, I'm actually looking, you know, looking on the internet. I'm checking the maps, and then I've got my backup coming in, scheduled for, maybe down the night before.
That's what a lot of people...
Well, and there's an additional factor. Not only is the I-17 quarter going to be unworth adjusted, that's actually being discussed right now by the Arizona Department of Transportation. But in addition, Phoenix is going to change dramatically. The level of service that folks have enjoyed there for years is going to be affected within a three-year period by the mergers that occurred over the industry. They only have a preserved amount of service that is in place for the next about two and a half years, at which point we are going to see deductions in service. Which means that having Prescott have an ability to serve markets other than Phoenix and be able to connect passengers through other markets is going to be more and more significant in terms of accommodating the needs of the citizen.
Let me back down. We'll get to that. American class U was served at Pittsburgh and St. Louis and Martin. Central major hubs, if you go to the mouth, like 300, John F. R. Ford. I want to take money once it happens by the means of the government.
First of all, thank you all for the years of the warriors giving up the fight. I know how important those are to the United States. At one time, this community had a lot of policy in which we reserve 10% of our available alternative water for housing to transport facilities. That's something that can always be visited. I like your thought process on the community land trust. We use a similar land trust to attract a collector of a lot of things, supply their jobs in Freeville, Joe, where the community provided an opportunity while we didn't give them anything. The opportunity was made available. But then we come here and exercise high investment in the lease process and create X amount of jobs, collect X amount of sales tax, and benefit this city immensely. I'm hearing the same scenario out of our airport. And I think you have a very attentive counter. And I'm hoping staff is hearing it better well. And it's not just the economic development opportunities. We also hear public health and safety, and the extended of the runways and the slurry bombers, and the ability to keep us one step in front of somebody else in making sure that our town is protected from wildland fire also. So we hear you loud and clear.
Go to the next slide. Yeah, just show the, this slide shows the, if you look at the orange, those are the two possible, actually, the yellow is the runway extension area that's required. The green, I guess, is the forest service area. And then the two orange areas are the two notional terminal configurations that have been looked at so far. That's probably as far as, the colors on the map and the font that I'm using. But that's what the actual process of linking the runway and the taxiways and all the different things would look like.
And that extension gets it. That gets us where we need to be.
It does. Obviously, is the, well, you hit the 1,300 feet. But I think in the end, there'll be more detailed studies that'll talk about different levels of service and all that. But I think those are what's been done already.
Yeah, I was looking at 1,365 foot extension versus a 2,000. But there was some discussion, and I understand that you were informed with the budgeting included, of a studio model.
The, yes, that's correct, Dr. Sabata. What we looked at here is basically the minimum extension is 1,365 feet. That gets us to 9,000. But as we've put together the numbers for cost, we actually included enough money to take it up to 2,000 feet longer, which would make it 9,600. And that clearly will make us, you know, comfortable from the standpoint of being able to use, say, like, regional jets, which is primarily what our carriers that would be providing air passenger service would be providing.
Jeff, when you first came onboard, it was back a number of months now. This council gave some direction. And you brought to us some suggestions on a general aviation airport, a regional classification, and another regional classification gave you. And we opted at that time for the one that was right in the middle with $1,000 cents. How do these recommendations, that you've backed, particularly the decision at that time?
The recommendations that you had before you basically are those that are aligned with the middle package. Commercial, regional, or, excuse me, commercial, local. But the reason that we didn't name it that way, if you will, this time, FAA doesn't recognize that label. So we, but the data are the same.
Okay, so going away from the labeling thing, to accommodate what we had asked this community before, what are we being asked to do now? Not by staff to say, but by the community, that's what we're being asked to look at. What's our next step?
Well, let me, let me just cover a couple of things, and then I'll answer your question directly. These, this matrix is in the back of your packet, and it will provide some additional detail for the discussion that we've had here today. I apologize for the smallness, but hopefully you'll be able to read. If not, I'll get you a larger copy. I know I had to use a larger copy. But here's our next steps, Councilman. Be preparing for council consideration of a resolution adopting the airport and airport area recommendations. We would hope to do that probably after the first of the year. And then, secondly, approval of a contract for an airport terminal siting assessment that would basically focus on the two alternatives that we identified on that area.
And do those two steps at that point open the doors for the FAA to pursue what this community wants to do?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
What is the assessment? It always seems like government takes so long to get anything done. So all these analysts of assessments and policies to go out and make sure we're doing the right thing. If we know we have two sites and one's better than the other, why do we need to have an assessment?
Well, I guess, Councilman, we don't know which one is better. We have some sense that both of them have some pluses and minuses. So we're trying to get a better feel for how they fit. The real issue is that the current location, given the relocation, realignment, if you will, of taxiway Charlie, the safety area is going to be impinged, so it's going to have to be moved. So that's one aspect of it. It certainly would be closer, let's say, to like 89, 89 to get into the airport. But the alternative would be on the south side of the terminal. It may have a far greater impact, if you will, for economic development, being located on that side because of the remaining acreage that is out there. So we want to make sure that both sites get a fair evaluation, if you will, and that will then certainly be brought to council.
The reason why I asked that question, it ended up to be a smart aleck about it. Sitting here for 14 years, and having plans drawn up, talking about the airport. We're 14 years downstream since I've been here. Enough's enough. We know what we need to do. We need to do it. And the bottom line, we're going out and we're doing, yet again, more testing, more testing the water, more fingers out there, putting money into it. We lost the opportunity to expand the runway because our environmental assessment went away because the city failed to act, in my opinion. So now we're having to do another assessment and more costs to taxpayers. This whole thing, and I appreciate all your work, because that just, you know, tells me that what we're thinking about collectively as a group, that we should have tackled this thing 12 years ago. And here we are, still sitting here, trying to discuss which is the best option. There's lands out there available with CVID to be bought. We have land in Chino Valley, the city of Prescott does, matter of fact, sections of land, where we should be actively pursuing a trade or a purchase of land to bring these things in for economic value to the city. There's tons of stuff that needs to be done, so I really personally want to see action. This is nice to bring everybody in a warm setting, but I want to see goals. I want to see timeframes, and I want to see council fund them, whether it's through bonding or however. This thing needs to happen. That's just my thing.
I can add to that, Captain. It's, one of the things we got to our end is that the businesses that are out there, the landlords, said the same thing, but why should we be listening to them? They started, they stopped on this. Why should we put planes together? And so I think this group says, get started with it and keep moving. Don't let me say, I'm going to stop for a year, and look back on the second you do. That's incredible.
We've got 15,000 Band-Aids on that terminal and that restaurant. It's time to jack this thing up and get on down the road.
But I would also add, it's a marathon, not a sprint. So it has to be a long-term commitment.
Absolutely.
Because it is a marathon, it's not something you can just kick on. You're difficult to, you're difficult to take.
And piggybacking off of your comment, Dr. Ayers, you know, I think clearly this council is committed to saying, let's take the first real step, which is the long-term commitment and the resolution that has been recommended and discussed today. I agree with the comments that we've heard from the business community and from the FAA about the city starting, stopping, starting, stopping. I agree with Steve's comments. It's been a long time that that's been happening. And this is the first time where I see a clear plan. We need to get into the weeds now in the detail, but we've got a plan to go forward with. And we've got the right people on our staff who I think can lead the charge from a staff perspective. But I would expect going forward that instead of it being a quarterly or yearly update, it's here's how the airport's going, this needs to be a more regular update to the council so that we can make sure, from a policy perspective, we're putting funding where it needs to be, we're directing staff's priorities as the policy centers to where they need to be, and that we're setting our goals, not only long-term, but year by year. We start the budget process in about 90 days. And if we're going to be focused on this, we need to know what our first steps are going to be and get on it. To me, it's a crucial part of our budget immediately to do it.
Charlie, thanks for your comments, and thank you, Steve, for your comments. I think we took our first step when we encouraged a manager to hire somebody like Jeff and move this airport differently than what it's getting from earlier. And we're hearing now some of the residual results within the last year. This man has been, how long have you been here, Jeff? Six months?
13 months.
13 months? Oh, I meant I was about to add here.
13.
So we're down to just start to see some of the sugar from all of this. But I agree with Blair. You need to get off the duff and let's move it forward. And we need to prioritize. We need to be able, as policymakers, we need to be able to prioritize what's important for this community's future. And you can't wait another 12 years to decide, oh, we should have done this 12 years ago.
And as much, we're also going to be looking at the general plan. And I think we need to make sure that we all like this proposal, that a lot of the language in this proposal is incorporated in our general plan so it remains our long-term guide in decision-making. We're done, not just the airport, but everything else around.
I have a couple of follow-up questions. And I have to thank you all, by the way, for all the work you've done. And my apologies, I have to leave a little early today, but I have an engagement I have to get out of. I'd like to go back to Dr. Sabata's comment about the merger of all these airlines. Is this going to affect the smaller airlines in addition?
It will affect, it will affect service at all levels. I mean, the plan right now is to move all the airlines to Terminal 2 that are in 3. They're going to then reinvent 3, and then they're going to be raising Terminal 2. And they're going to consolidate all the service at Phoenix into terminal buildings. And that was announced to us about three or four months ago when we were spending a day with them. I love their future plans are. And they certainly expect a significant drop in total employments and total air service to the Phoenix metropolitan area. The associated regional carriers that work with them obviously will be impacted by this model. And so in anticipating this, I think this is important.
So with the drop of service at the larger airlines, there's going to create an issue of maybe some smaller airlines giving better service than these larger ones?
Well, that's going to be one of the things. But also, we're going to see a drop in available choices for individuals who even get their vehicle and ride down there. And you may want to explore other helping operations. Like I said, I mentioned, you know, Salt Lake as an example. Or maybe that would be an alternative into the California areas, Denver. I mean, we could have several discussions. But clearly, it's important to note that the change in air service is going to change air service for those who now are dependent upon riding down there without air service. So for the greatest amount of choices, we'd like to develop our own relationships.
I may add something too. Some of my recent travels, I've gone to Salt Lake and into Nashville for the time. And the Salt Lake and Nashville run is now about half the time a regional jet. It's not a full-size aircraft. That's a long one. It's two plus one years. So very comfortable flight, but it's regional jet. And so you see the airlines adapting to when they can fill an airplane up and what size airplane they can fill up. Certainly, these would seem to be a steady opportunity for a city or airport to catch the vehicles. But I think what you're trying to, trying to happen sooner, it may happen sooner than we can act, but we still get the cost.
My second question was, on this land trust, what kind of layer, what, I guess, how long has this type of thinking been around for this type of housing?
They started over 30 years ago.
Okay, so there's track record.
There's a track record of, you can actually go to these community land trusts, and then you'll find there's a national organization out of the way down. And these are fairly prominent in the U.S., Canada, and the U.K. now.
But does it affect other property values?
Yeah, it makes them generally go up.
Okay, then, secondly, is there a layer of bureaucracy that has to manage this? The city would have to report.
There's a nonprofit organization generally that's willing to, to keep it on. From what I've been able, I'm not an expert, but my research, it's not a big bureaucracy. Doesn't involve a lot of the city's management staff. Or, and that people are kind of running their own thing as part of a nonprofit organization. Again, there's two flavors of it. If you go to, you'll find that people are thinking like Durham, that the people are demanding the property. It's in terrible shape, and these guys tend to take the land back and revitalize. Most of the property values are on, are stabilized. you know, and revitalize, and those are the profit companies that are stabilized and do this. Then like what other companies, they come in just like the oil and held master plan and shemarks. And that's been very, very successful with it.
Thank you.
I hope you guys are hearing the consensus too. I think that we all pretty much agree that our airport needs to grow up, and it has for a while. And as, as a council, I think we're ready to start backing that with our dollars and, you know, just, I think like everyone else, we're getting impatient to get it started. I just hope when we, when we get into it, we're smart with the money. The thing that just keeps coming to me is, you know, we don't need fancy, we need functional. Right now, what we don't, what we have is, is a terminal that's not really a functional terminal. The runways aren't functional for the needs of today's aviation. We're playing a lot of catch-up, just like we are with our infrastructure. When we look at a terminal, you know, I saw plans for a, I think it was a $15 million terminal that we had 12, 14 years ago. I don't think we need something like that. I think we can start with something smaller, and I think you can, yeah, expandable, but without looking expandable. I mean, if we plan ahead, we can have it so when we build onto it and we get bigger, we can, we can spend the money slow but sure and have something really nice. So, I'm really happy you guys got this going on.
Jeff, oh, I'm sorry, Charlie. Yeah, a lot of what the group talked about though was also the airport area, so I don't want to lose sight of that. I've been talking so much about the airport, and that's a, that's a key to the startup. Where the terminal's sited, you know, whether or not the runway is extended is really going to dictate what the landowners have to do. Because they want certainty. They want to know if the city's committed, they're moving in this direction. And I think you'll see a, a lot of growth, one direction or the other, depending on that decision.
Yeah, actually, I think, I think Charlie said it perfect in one meeting before, he said, that runway is the spine of our airport. And if we got to have that in place and that functional for everything else that we're backing on it for.
But I would add to that too. The issue of affordable housing came up on any day. And, you know, we're a major employer, the other major employers, a lot of folks in that middle income group, married, two kids, they're living in those communities because property values are simply low. There has to be some assistance on affordable housing for workforce that are a little closer. You see a little more play, that's, I think we're really tied about is the opportunities for affordable housing for those people who fill our schools, who fill our churches, who buy, you know, the biggest consumer group is not 55 and over, it's 27 to late 40s or something. That big consumer group that buys, it's going to be taxed revenue. So, we have to find a place for them in a, in a, whatever, to get affordable housing and grow up in our community in other ways.
Craig, I'd add to that. From the perspective of a business that touches on all of the points that we've made today, 180 employees, aerospace manufacturing, we have a broad range of skills and salaries. Our recruiting is incumbent upon those levels of housing. So, for us to get younger or mid-career engineers, we need that. To get our employees in and out of the airport and our customers in and out of the airport, we need that, we need that infrastructure of the roadway and the terminal. Today, everybody is, is struggling back and forth. When we had better service, we used almost exclusively the horizon, we had our Mesa Airlines down. When that went away, it was rare, and it became non-existent for us. So, it's incumbent for us to grow our business. And the little play is there, and the infrastructure around the airport is critical for us to also attract our employees and customers. It's also coming with that to attract the other businesses that serve us and bring them up, because we are a subcontracted business. So, everything we build, we have subcontractors around the Prescott area and the valley and elsewhere that feed the product to us. So, we can assemble, build, test, and ship the product. So, that whole infrastructure is, needs to be there for a business of our type to grow, thrive, that will be recruited to this area.
Mayor, it sounds to me like every single group, every single recommendation is going to rely upon us to make. It sounds like that's where we better go.
Before I wrap it up, anybody else?
Uh, thank you, ladies. The, this has been a long journey, and I hope everybody kind of takes the time to really study the, the matrix here, the two-page, because it takes us through the whole, the whole project. Alex, thanks for bringing out that this is more than an airport. As this group started settling in and looking, very honestly, the start was more the airport area than it was the airport itself, because we were looking for an economic development driver that would start to look at the north side of Prescott, that bounded on the east by Prescott Valley, on the north, Pacino Valley, the west, Windsor, Baton Rouge generally, and to the south, the National Forest. So, as we looked at the, the growth of Prescott, it's generally in that area. So, all of a sudden, the, the airport becomes the centerpiece of this big table, which included the land to the north. And we realized more and more, every time we would interview somebody, that the commitment to the airport had a big effect on all of the lands around the airport. So, if we're going to develop the land to create customers for the airport, it has to go hand in hand. And this study will, will bring that out. The critical thing now, and I hope the council, and I'm impressed by the comments we've had, is that sooner than later, we instruct the, the staff to move forward with a resolution that will commit the city of Prescott to starting the first process. And that's in this. There will be more to come as we identify and move forward here, then we can start looking and working with the stakeholders around the airport to, but this will give us the, the roadmap of what they can do with their property and where the additional development will be and what type of development it will be. So, if you look at, at the recommendations, and also actually look at the bios of people involved, we got a lot of hours out of these folks. And so far, it had cost the city even a couple of calls. Ten dollars an hour, I got on that. But on behalf of the council, this is, this is a good day for us. And I hope the council will move forward. Craig, I don't know whether it would be easy to make the last first of the year now, we've got a workshop meeting in December. If, if y'all can be prepared for that resolution. And, and what this really does, it tells two other entities that we're dead serious. It tells the FAA that we're making a commitment to invest city dollars in this project. And we also have another partner, the state of Arizona, that contributes money also, almost equally to what we contribute. And we need to tell them that this is not a startup and stop. And so, this is a very important commitment from the city. And when we, when we make that, then we, we are committed. So, I hope everybody will, will.
One more, one more thing, Mayor. I think I heard something else about, about the need to iron out for the study session sooner than later. It has to do with water. It has to do with, you know, alternative portfolio. It has to do with exercising our right to import. It has to addressing the water need for, addressing some of the things the community has brought to us with regards to wanting, living accommodations here for the general workforce. And with 300 acre feet of water in the portfolio as it lives, breathes, and speaks today, it's an inadequate infrastructure availability, resource availability. And we need to talk about how to go get our water and bring it here to prepare for doing some of the things that are going to be exercised out at that airport. Otherwise, what we're doing is exercising out of the airport to supply all the people that are living in accommodations in the local community rather than this one.
I have one last question, I guess, I'm trying to clear on, and going back to what Eric's brought up, is the fact that there is a lot of landowners and a lot of land out there around the airport. Do we have, or can we, or have we, or will we assemble a team to address those property owners and their needs and their concerns about what's available and what their intention is as far as development? And as I sit here looking at the CVID property, have, can we actively address their concerns and wanting to sell that, whether it's beneficial for the city to trade, consume, bring that into the city? Where do we go now with trying to assemble a direction out of property owners at that airport? Do we have, do we have some forward-looking thought? Or do we, you know, I think that's a, that's a management with our guidance, the management requirements.
But I know that both Jeff and Craig have been deep with the landowners. And how we, we zone some of those properties, the uses that would be most compatible with what we're talking about here today would be GL and the management. So, Craig, I think you and Jeff heard that also.
And I think the last.
Whatever type of agreement takes, why we're here to.
The last thing is, I would ask management, is if the airport active zone was drawn up years ago, is that airport active zone still a viable zone? And does that need to be looked at or changed, or is it still good the way it is with that radius now?
You mean the aircraft impact zones?
Right.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna need to have to, uh, pay back because of the airport safety project that was recently done. And that will certainly be a consideration in the runway lengthy project as well, when we'll look at how those contours need to be adjusted.
Anyone else? Any more comment?
Well, I'm sure to speak for the whole committee, if you, we have any questions for me, especially Robbins, because she's really smart in this kind of stuff. We're all Prescott residents, we'd like to see the quality of airport, the quality of development, and we'd be happy to take anyone's call, any time.
Well, I don't, you know, so we, couple of things. I don't see this group, this is, we're not, we're not devil's.
Well, I know we're not.
It's still worth it, you know.
And we were thinking about what to do with our Fridays.
Yeah.
Well, you know, don't reschedule.
You got a pay raise today, so.
You don't beat some strangers when it comes time for powerful deliberations over the general plan. The general plan needs to address these types of issues rather than just the warm and fuzzy parts and threats.
Very good thinking. So, Jeff, we didn't let you on, even talk, but we're fortunate to have an airport manager now as the honorary with the motor state and the FBA, and this is going to help us enough a lot. And when we make this commitment, that we make it in the form that is meaningful to the people you have to go through and are like. Thanks. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. This is the end of the meeting.
Mayor, for the, just the edification of the, our attendees, this will be put up on the website, so you'll be able to see it.